It was pretty special.
I was excited about that.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order a city council workshop meeting, February 7th, 2018, approximately 6:45 PM for interview board applicant. At this time, Nicholas in Bornoni?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. Please come up here, sit, and just, if you would, tell us a little bit about yourself and why you'd like to be on these boards, and we'll make it really quick.
Absolutely.
You can settle too, Louie.
There you go.
Well, first off, I'd like to thank everybody for having me here. My name is Nicholas in Bornoni. This is my beautiful daughter, Liliana Bornoni, and we have been residents of Satellite Beach now for about a year. I'm a full-time student. I will be graduating next fall with my bachelor's, the concentration in HR. I am here to hopefully become a better part, a more useful member of our community to, instead of sitting back and wishing and wanting yet to step forward and to actively participate in bettering, you know, doing what I can. And I look forward to the learning experience and all these many wonderful people that I've had the opportunity to be here with.
Thank you very much. You, Mark, the sustainability as your first.
Yes, sir.
And then Sampson Island Working Board as your second.
Correct.
Okay, great. What I'll do is I'll ask the council if they have any questions. Mindy?
I was gonna ask your daughter. Do you think, Liliana, is that your name? Beautiful. Do you think your daddy should serve on one of our boards?
Yeah.
Yeah?
There you go.
Why do you think he should?
'Cause he had a haircut.
There you go.
Best reason I've ever heard, ever. So you picked the sustainability board. That's where I started, on the sustainability board. It's a really wonderful board. Do you have any ideas or any things that you are real passionate about?
No.
We do.
Okay.
And growing up in Melbourne Beach, fishing in the Indian River, surfing in the ocean, I know there's been a lot of raw sewage that has been dumped. I know there's been septic tank issues, et cetera. I am very passionate about that, and I'd like to see some more transparency and do whatever I can. But the Indian River Lagoon system absolutely is a focus of mine, without a doubt.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
It's a focus of ours, too. And we're distraught when things that have happened, happen. But I want to thank you for stepping up and wanting to be involved. I know you, you know, it sounds like you grew up in this area and, you know, you hold all of the things that we value as important in our, you know, ecosystem here, important to you, too. So I'm thrilled that you're, you know, volunteering to serve on either one of these two boards. But thank you.
You're welcome. I appreciate your time.
Nick, what originally, you said you've been here for about a year. What originally attracted you to Satellite Beach? What was, why did you want to move here?
Well, to be honest with you, I've been with Publix for six years. I work at the Satellite Beach Publix. And we had the opportunity to rent right here in the area, private living on Emerald Court. We were in the pines, and we were blessed with this opportunity to rent two rooms right across from the post office, right near work, right close to campus. And that's why we're here and happy to be here.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
I don't really have any questions, but again, I, I think you are the right person for the right place. That, we're always looking for those that are passionate and like the things, as we talk about, eco-friendly, green-friendly, Indian River-friendly, beach-friendly. You can quite tell by a lot of the boards that we have have a lot to do, do with that. And I think it's great when we get new people on there with new experience, but people have also lived in the area. I think you have a lot to probably bring to the table. I think one of the things you'll really like, though, is, I think all of us here will tell you, you learn so much more when you're on the inside. When you become part of a board, there are probably many things that you don't know as the average citizen that you will become so much more familiar with, probably make you more passionate about more things. But I think it's a very good learning and growing experience. I'm sure you, you will enjoy it as you come to it and probably do more as time goes on.
Nick, thank you. I talked to you beforehand. I appreciate you applying. It's an agenda item. Like I said, you're more than welcome to stay. Not, well, we'll definitely get ahold of you.
I appreciate it, man.
Thank you very much for coming and applying.
Thanks for having me.
Any further business?
Appreciate your time.
Okay.
Thanks, Nick.
Yes, sir.
Any further?
Finally, uh, thank you for coming.
Everyone, I'd like to call to order a city, regular city council meeting, the city of Satellite Beach, February 7th, 2018, approximately 7:00 PM. Please join Vice Mayor Montanaro for a prayer and a pledge.
Lord, thank you for allowing us to be here this evening to make decisions for our community, and please give us the wisdom and guidance to make good ones. Also be with our men and women who are serving in the military and our first responders who take care of our daily needs across our country. Amen.
Thank you.
For joining the pledge, persons to the Father, United States of America, and to the Republic with which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. This time we'll move on to Agenda Item 3, which is citizens' comments. Citizens' comments. I will first take residents who are actually in the city limits of Satellite Beach first. You'll have five minutes to speak. When all the citizens' comments are finished, we'll answer the questions. So the podium is open. John?
Hello, it's been a while. John Fergus, 135 Maple Drive. You should have something in front of you. The legislature's at it again. The issue is global choice home rule. And this time it hits home. It has to do with beach access and really has to do with limiting beach access. And this has been a big issue on the West Coast, at least in Walton County. And I've sent out some stuff, and Dominic's got more than the rest of you, but I've had copies of the two bills. I went through them. It never says the word "beach", but it obviously would apply. And very draconian. And so my suggestion is that the city seriously consider enacting an ordinance which defines for this city beach access. And after I did that, I was able to find a copy of this Walton County ordinance. I played around with it and sent Dominic my most recent draft. And I think it should be fast-tracked so it's adopted before the current bills became law, and hopefully then they'd be grandfathered, although Jim may have, you know, a different opinion on that I'd have to defer to. But if it's to go forward, I'd very much like to be involved in trying to structure that. I already can see things that I might change with what I did in just a couple hours today. But if we're going to do anything, if we wait long enough, it won't matter. It'll be too late. So it's either do it now or kiss it and just let the legislator, legislators tell us how to run our business. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Courtney, if you want to give us to Jim and timeframe here, do we know?
He's right. It's racing through the committees right now, and I would agree with him. I think it would be great to do this. And Jim's looking at it now, and we can, if he thinks it's a good idea, and you all think it's a good idea, we can bring back an ordinance at the next meeting.
Let's also, again, my reason for the question was timing.
Yeah.
Is next meeting soon enough?
I think it's fine, next meeting, but I think next meeting would be the latest. You know, we really need to get on it.
Jim? That actually informed me, language that he put together that's Satellite Beach specific.
Okay.
So I'm sure John could get that to Mr. Beadle.
Some better.
Jim, you'll have to take care of course. Okay, thank you very much. And we'll probably see that on the next council adjutant. Thank you. Thank you, John. The floor is still, citizens' comment is still open.
Hello. I've been meaning to come here for at least a year. My question is, with the bikers on the road, when did it stop that they had to quit?
Your name?
Mary DiAgostino, 435 De Soto Parkway.
Thank you.
A citizen for 20 years. And right now, the bikers don't have to obey the laws of the road. We have to beware. They don't have to stop. And I nearly came here a year ago because I almost hit a woman that blew through a stop sign. Thank you, God, I was going so slow that I didn't hit her. So why are the bikers not having to stop at stop signs and not having to obey the laws? I know my children got tickets back in the day.
Okay. I believe they do. I actually talked with the Indian Harbor Beach Police Chief the other day on an incident very similar to this on South Patrick Drive or the Riverside portion of it, where there is no real bike lane and the bikes ride basically on the surface. And he said they are exactly the same as automobiles. So the answer to you from that and what I've been told is that they do have to abide by the laws. They have to stop at signs and so forth.
And your point, then, with when they blow through De Soto, the four-way stop?
Well, again.
I mean, I don't know.
I'm just, you asked us the question. Do they have, have to abide by the same laws that automobiles do? And the answer is yes.
So do we go to the police regarding this?
If it is an enforcement issue, which obviously it is, then we'll notify the police to, to check that area.
If there's an area that's kind of constant about that, if there's some issues?
I think it's everywhere. I think every, maybe, you know, whoever wants to, at least who's here, I'm so scared to drive because, you know, they're just blowing through. I get it with the walkers and the joggers, okay, but the bicycles just...
Right. I can, I can ask the police to keep an extra eye out. And if you see an intersection that you see kind of repeated violations or something like that, then just email me and we can put a police officer out there to...
Well, just so to inhale continuously. I mean, I mean, I can just go throughout Satellite Beach. Like I say, I was on Norwood inhale, and she just blew through, and I stopped my car and said, you know, and then I noticed she had an infant in her, in the back. Had I hit her?
Right. Okay, we'll address it.
We'll address it with the police.
Thank you.
Thank you. Podium still open?
My name is Matt Fleming. I live at 1777 A1A. Been a resident for 20 years at that address. I'm here regarding the material that's being placed on the beach. I was here a few weeks ago, and I'd like to share what I have been able to find out and make a plea, again, that you guys will join me in my desire to protect the reef and join me in taking action to protect the reef. I've seen three sets of tests that have been completed, and that's with the county, and that's my test, and another individual had their test done. Of the three sets of numbers, the county numbers are the lowest in terms of silt content and by quite a bit. So digging into test methods and whatnot, there are lots of different ways to test this material to ensure that it is the proper size. There needs to be a better standard. I am working to develop a better standard with a couple of scientists, and I would like to see the city do its own testing. I'm doing, you know, I care about this issue deeply, and everything I'm doing is geared towards making it politically viable for you guys to change position on whether or not we should bury the reef. The project says only 10% of it's going to be buried. When it starts eroding, it'll be 90% or more. We know that. For, for us, you know, we see the real problem as the county dumping dirt on our beach and coming into our town and really degrading something that's, that's valued by a lot of people. I'd like to see the city stand up, you know, and say that you guys are ready to stand with the community in protecting the beach and the reef. And that's, that's it. That's all I have to say.
Thank you very much. Public comment. So if you're here to speak on the beach, please speak, and then we will answer it, because I know we're going to have a lot of the same issues. Speak, and then we will address your concerns. So the podium's still open. Okay, and we'll move on from that issue. Is any other citizens' comments? Here in the number closes, citizens' comments portion. Courtney, you'd like to address the beach. You've talked to a lot of the council people on it.
Well, since we knew that y'all were going to be here, that we, we saw some of the Facebook posts coming through, I asked the council members, you know, what their opinions of this were, and so they kind of summarized it up, and I'm just going to summarize what they all, basically a five-zero said, that we haven't received any evidence that there's any pollution or anything like that being added to the beach. And we have also not received any other viable alternative to preventing the beach from being armored later when property owners get fearful and can't protect their property anymore with the current dunes. So when we get that, we'll be glad to hear it. We'll be glad to talk to you about those policies that you have, or maybe alternatives. We'll be glad to look at any data that you have. But at this moment, this is the best alternative to what we consider an ecological disaster, which is armoring the beach. Property owners have the right to protect their properties. We have 40% of the beachfront in Satellite Beach, and if we have seawalls on everything but our beach property, we will be, our erosion will be even worse on our properties that we own. And we'll end up having to put seawalls in. And that, that means taxpayers will be paying here for that, not bed taxpayers. So we want to make sure, we want to make sure that that doesn't happen. And if there's any other way that the community, say the mid-reach, can bring those ideas to us, we'll be glad to listen to them. We have, you know, we don't want to spend, we don't like spending that money on the beach sand any more than you do. But we don't, we have not received any other viable alternative than the beach re-nourishment at this time.
Comments from council? Any additional comments? Matt, I appreciate you coming here. You know, we talk a lot. You called me today. I'll talk to you anytime on it. I have done tons of research around with the people in the county on the sand that's being put there. And I can tell you, talking to Mike McCurry, that, Nick, I think you could add something here, how the quality is that's being on there. I think it's a lot different than what's being reported. And Nick, do you have anything on that? Courtney, do you mind?
While he's coming up, I wanted to add, when I started here in 2013, Surf Rider came in to talk to me about the quality of the sand, and we worked with their volunteer geologist to come up with the specs that, and called the county and said, you know, we agree with Surf Rider that we want these specs. And they came up with those specs, and the county met those standards. So, so right now, we're using the standards that Surf Rider came up with. And, and that, so I want to make sure that that's clear, that we have, whenever a better idea comes into us and we think we can do that, we do it. You know, we, we'll support that, and we've been doing that.
So I'll keep it really short, and I'll address some of the things that Matt mentioned, silt content and the standards. With the results from the county, the grain size, the mean, the mean grain size of the testing is within range. And the reason that the testing has a specific range of .33 millimeters to .6 millimeters, which is a very small window, is because of the issues of the vegetation and the habitat of the mid-reach, specifically sapulated worm reef, which is not coral, but it's a reef system that the sapulated worms create. So this environment needs some silt. So with the percentage of the testing on average, with the tests that were done, it's a little under 1.92% silt content with 98.962% sand, high percentage sand. And the borrow pits they selected from, there were over 10 borrow pits that were looked at as potential locations for the sand. They only selected two because of this very specific requirements of grain size, silt content. The carbonite content was not copina, but silica. So they did everything they could to create the closest resembling ecosystem that they could use for the habitat. So just to keep it simple, and Matt, if you want to come and talk about it more, there's plenty of information and different conversations you can have about, you know, those, the data and the habitat and its geological formation and the ephemeral nature of the mid-reach. I don't want to take too much time, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Nick, very much. And Matt, as I've always said to you, anytime, call me, call us anytime you'd like to sit down. If you'd like to stand with Nick, please make appointment. We'll be more than happy to continue the conversation. Okay? Thank you. We'll be moving on to city council comments. I'll start real quick. The city of Satellite Beach, I want to thank all the first responders, the people that work here. We got a pretty good rating. They were the fourth safest city in Florida. So I thought, you know, that's a great showing and, and great work by our people that work for this city. They really care about it to make it a better place. And there's a lot of different criteria that was met for it, the beach being one, and, you know, thanks to everybody for that. That's all I have to say on it.
I'll just add, it was, it was great to see the mayor out for the mayor's challenge. I was there behind him and made sure that he went the distance, which was good. I can tell you that I, every morning since then, I am doing my minutes and recording my minutes so that we can all do well for the city there. And I know I've seen a lot of people out here. It was great news to see about the satellite track getting done. I think that's very exciting news. I told that to my son. He said that was great. It's about 10 years too late, but nevertheless, it was great. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Mark? I have nothing, sir. Thank you.
Spent Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday last week in Tallahassee, came home with the crud. So you'll have to forgive me if you can't hear me too well, but we had really productive meetings with some of our legislators up there. And I will tell you, what John talks about and brings up about preemption is, is an ongoing issue in Tallahassee. They're trying to circumvent our ability to make local decisions in our communities. On Tuesday morning at 10 o'clock, Courtney and I were at a Senate Subcommittee meeting to testify on vacation rentals. Vacation rentals are becoming more and more popular in the state of Florida and more and more popular in the nation. And basically, what it comes down to is the state is looking to preempt our ability to prevent many hotels from ending up in your neighborhoods. We have laws, we have an ordinance on the books that prevents it. Fortunately, an amendment that was put on the bill that Senator Stube was running last week kept our ordinance in place. But the ordinance, but the legislation that happened in 2014, all of the people that used that date for their protection went out the window. So this is what's happening in Tallahassee. Fortunately, our ordinance has been protected, but it's still not over yet. Tomorrow, there's another Senate Subcommittee that it goes through, that bill goes through again, and that can be changed because another amendment can be put in place that removes our ordinance. So we had good meetings with Senator Mayfield and Representative Goodson and Representative Fine, Senator Hucle, and we've expressed our concerns with the different things that Satellite Beach holds dear and near as far as our ability to make local decisions for our community. So thank you for being there. Mindy was there, and also Suzanne Sherman, our Assistant City Manager, and we got our messages through to our legislators. That's all I have.
He stole my glory. No, same thing. I was at the same committee meeting. I can't express enough on, you know, we're examples for the beach, for example. You know, John Fergus is bringing forward a bill here. I would start really focusing on this type of a bill because if this allows private beach owners, basically what it's saying is that the beach in front of these private properties will become private beach. So that'll be seawalls, that'll be, we have no control over the beach. The county will have no control over the beach or anything. And so...
Matt, excuse me. No, sorry.
So there's other areas that we could be focusing on as well to protect the beaches and protect where we live. The vacation rental thing, the other side of this that also could be very bad for the lagoon and very bad for us is that if they do end up getting allowed, the way the bill reads is that up to six people can be in a bedroom. So take your average 1,800 square foot, three-bedroom, two-bath home, you put six people in each room, you're going to have 18 people in a house. If you think that our sewer system can't handle the load we have now, just imagine streets full of vacation rentals, full of 20 people in each house pumping sewage into our lines. It just would not be pretty. Of course, we would do everything we can in our power to stop it, but if we don't vote the right people into the right places, there's nothing that we're going to be able to do about it because it'll just go right through the committee. And the meetings are as, as good as we can make them, but...
Thank you. Matt, did he leave? But, okay. It will be, the beach will be an agenda item for our next meeting, and at that time, that will be the avenue to, for public comment on it. It's not an agenda item tonight, and so therefore during council comments, there's not an open discussion. But it will absolutely be, because in ordinance, there's two readings on it, and that it will be in an open dialogue. Any further council comments? Thank you. City attorneys report?
I just have one item. Yesterday, there was a meeting between Ms. Gersh, her attorney, Courtney, and John and myself. It looks like the issue regarding the fence may be resolved. She, Ms. Gersh indicated that it's their intention to take the fence down. There are some timing issues about getting contractors out, and we're supposed to get an email giving us some time schedule as far as when we'll be done.
This is very positive, I think.
Great. That was, when you called me on that, that was the best part of it, that we had a good dialogue. And Jim, thank you very much for working on that. Any further comment or discussion with our city attorney in front of the council? Here in the city managers report. Courtney?
On February 9th through 11th, the city of Satellite Beach, Billings Clothing and Long Doggers are going to host the 4th Annual Locals Only Surf Fest at Pelican Beach Park. So if you would like to be in that competition, there's, we only just have to contact the, you can contact us at the city, and we'll put you in contact with the people to register. There also will be, this year, a new pro-am skate event at the Satellite Beach Skate Park on Friday night, if anybody's interested in that. I'm hoping that my husband does not enter that. Because he's too old, I'm just saying. He's going to be in the surf contest. This is softball. And also, if you're a parent of a little girl, Cinderella's Wedding will be held February 10th at David R. Schecter Center. The cost for that is 18 for a child and 10 for an adult. On February 11th, the Satellite Beach Lions Club 7th Annual Car Show will be held from 10 to 2 at the DRS Community Center, and registration for that begins at 9:00 AM. For informational items, we wanted to inform you that while we were in Tallahassee, after, on, we stayed until Thursday to meet with Senator Stube, who is basically the author of the Senate bill...
of the Senate bill preempting our ability to regulate short-term rentals. And then we also met with Placentia and Subby DeRosa's office. We met with Senator Huchel again about this one specific issue. So we think we got some good, good meetings out of that. The one good thing is that on the House side, Representative Fine is very, very, very much on our side. And he, we sent him outline of what our arguments were today, and he responded that he's, he believes that when he gets to his committee, that's when he'll make the amendment to apply to only homestead or property. While we were there, Mindy and I always come up with the best ideas while we're eating, and we came up with the idea of possibly putting this item on the charter as a charter question. So we're developing that idea with Jim, and we would like to bring that back to you at your next meeting for you to discuss. Because if we, if we do that, you know, the mayor erased that whole thing, but it would definitely send a message to Tallahassee about what our residents feel about that issue. So put that as a referendum question to our community. We, as staff, we needed to approve an emergency fix to Pelican Beach Park handicap ramp prior to the beach re-nourishment project. That was basically the hurricane damage. So we finally were able to get the contractor out to do that. The cost for that was $9,863. Satellite High School will hold the rip and cutting for the track expansion and improvement project on March 2nd, 2018, at 12:30. We did receive the formal invitation for that. And we also recommended to invite some of the board members of the school board that assisted us in getting the track done too as well. And just for the community to know, we participated in the cost of that track expansion by $30,000, and we have an agreement with the school to open that track up to the public, so the public will be able to use that track from now on. We will have a sustainability summit tomorrow night. That'll be here, starting, the events start at 5:00. At 5:00, there'll be a workshop for staff and council members to, on how to do a sustainability plan. And then at 6:00, the sustainability boards will start presenting what they've done across the county. And I'm going to, I'm going to ask you to approve an action item before I ask John to come up. As we move into budget preparations for the next year, we are struggling to replace reserves after two hurricanes in one fiscal year. This has become a problem for us, particularly because we know this $25,000 homestead exemption is coming in November, and we know that will affect us next year. So it's our concern that we would really like to rebuild some of those reserves this And we also have typical cost increases and facility needs that are exceeding the normal valuation increases we get in property taxes. So we would like to schedule a workshop with you to discuss those issues. We are presenting the audit to you on March 7th. You'll hear from the auditor about that, about the declining reserves, and we would like you to hear that before. So we would prefer if you can make the workshop for March 8th, if possible, if that's okay with everybody?
It's okay with me.
Okay. That would work better because you'll be able to hear the auditor's concerns and how they look at those forecasting. And with the $25,000 homestead exemption, how that's impacting us, our ability to pay for normal expenses.
Consensus is good on this?
Yeah, 700, yeah.
Consensus is good on this?
Yeah.
Any question on this?
Yeah.
Has FEMA paid us back any yet?
No. No, we're not expecting FEMA payments anymore. I kind of chuckled. I saw one politician, I won't name him, but he was on a Facebook page talking about how local governments spend money like water because we know we're going to get paid for FEMA, and I kind of laughed because we never get paid for FEMA.
How much does, how much would have FEMA owed us?
About $650,000.
We're in the 500, 600 range that they're going to owe us ultimately.
Yeah, we spent about $650,000.
So if we would have had that, then we wouldn't have been in as trouble on the reserves.
Yes. But we also, or we also have a lot of facilities that we have to talk to you about too. The other issue is because of the tough nature of these discussions, sometimes it's great to work through these issues with the Citizens Budget Advisory Committee. And I know that could be hard on the staff and council, but when you're trying to get, you know, really tough problems solved, it's better to have them involved than not involved. And we normally put a staff budget advisory committee together, and we're thinking instead of that this year that we create a citizens budget advisory committee. So we'll talk to you that, about that with you at the workshop and put together that idea, but I just wanted to kind of give you some time to think about that idea and see if that, you know, rolls around in your head.
Courtney, before we do that, because it was an action item, and all action items I have to comment for public comment. So I'll take a public comment on the action item about our May, March 8th meeting concerning the budget and reserves. So floor is open. Here, none. Which council, Courtney?
John is going to come up to you and just kind of give you an overview of some of the development applications we have coming down the line. Just remember that the applicant's not here, so he can't really answer questions and give opinions when we don't have an advertised public hearing. He's just kind of giving you an update.
Good evening, ma'am. Over the last 10 years, we've seen year over year increases in permit activity. So it's really become a very busy department, and looking at permit increases from last year to this year, we've actually had a 16% increase in permit activity, which ultimately results in permit revenue. So the development permit has been very busy. And as you'll see, I'm going to run down more or less a bullet of some of the things that are going on in the area. And there are others that are still in the preliminary stages. It's just too early really to talk about, but on the next update, I hope to share some more with you. The McDonald's is going to be doing a renovation primarily interior. You know, I mean, the building itself was, remember when they tore down, I won't say it was 10, 12 years ago. So it's not as old of a building as the McDonald's or the Galley Causeway that is going through a substantial renovation to the exterior. So primarily, it's going to be interior. There are going to be some exterior things that we're asking for that it looks like they are going to do to include and improve landscaping and a fresh coat of paint. The, and they're also doing some LED lighting. They're trying to become a little more energy efficient in what they're doing. The Publix is going to be doing an interior renovation, and the good news is, you know, we're looking at approximately about a 30% vacancy right now at the Atlantic Plaza. But we've got a lot of stuff that's going to be coming online here fairly quickly. Generally speaking, there's 27 units and there are eight vacancies. And as you see, when we're going to talk about some of these businesses that are coming in, that number's going to go down considerably. You know, they're going to be combining and subdividing these spaces, so the numbers are somewhat fluid. But the Ketamine Wellness Center is expected to get a CO within 60 days. The, there's going to be Chinese takeout, I know you're looking forward to that one. That CO should happen in 30 days. A Pizza Hut is in for a preliminary permit review right now. We're just kind of giving them some guidance on what they're going to need to do there. The Ace Hardware, they're going to be relocating, and once they relocate into a larger space, Planet Fitness is going to be taking over the old Chinese buffet and blowing out the walls into where the Ace Hardware currently is. So they're going to have quite a bit of space there. So that would be Planet Fitness, and roughly speaking, we're talking about within six months. So essentially, Ace Hardware has to move, and Jim would like to see that happen within 90 days, but that could take as long as six months. And, you know, it's going to be a real trip to try to move the fixtures and the furnishings over and try to do without a whole loss of, you know, opening time. The Taco Bell is going to be doing some renovations, and for all of us that have been through the drive-through, you'd be happy to hear that they're going to deal with that turning radius so you're not either hitting the building or driving in a ditch. So they're going to soften that turn up and hopefully it's going to make it a lot easier to navigate. They are going to improve a lot of the ADA accesses and some landscaping, not a lot of opportunities for it, but they're going to try to do some things. And then a lot of interior renovations. Beach Plaza, as you know, we recently authorized a facade grant for that property. Mr. Allison was planning on starting it in February, and of course, because of the hurricane, he had a loss of his roof across the street, so he's been focusing on that. So most of the engineering is done on it, and he's looking to start that first in March. So that's going to be valid, a four-month renovation. He's looking to add some additional professional office spaces as well as, he's got a restaurant in mind, can't tell you who yet, but it's a seafood restaurant, I can tell you that much. Hopefully that'll happen. Let's see here, the mobile station, last night, Monday night, they went for a variance, and that variance was tabled. The board didn't really see it as really truly being the minimum that they could be asking for, so they're going back to the drawing board, they're going to reconfigure some things, and then they're going to come back next month to make their appeal again for variance. What they're looking to do is to, obviously, the pumps are staying where they are, and they're not expanding on that. They're looking to expand the retail more than double the size, and that's one of the issues that the board was struggling with. And to increase that size, they would have to move it back to the west further, and therefore it encroaches into that rear setback. So they need to work on the minimum as far as a setback. But that is going to be a complete tear down of the building, replacement of the canopy, and actually, that's what started all this, was the hurricane. Hurricane took out a lot of that canopy, and that just led to the concept of, let's just redo everything. The Atlantic Storage Bank demolition, that's right next to the north side of the Atlantic Plaza, that one also got the variance Monday night, and so that basically set them on the path of the demolition, so they're hoping to do that demolition within, I'd say, 60 days and then rebuild it to expand their storage facilities in that area. The Pelican Coast North demolition, they're currently finishing up the asbestos assessment and abatement. They haven't really started with the abatement yet. It's probably going to be a couple of weeks before they actually get the abatement completed. You know, they've got three or four buildings where they're focusing their efforts on the abatement first because our department's looking to burn down a couple of buildings, and they've got to deal with that first. It's really been a wonderful training site for the police, the fire, the FBI. It's just been a great training ground for them. So we've really been getting some mileage out of that, and we're all looking forward to having those buildings raised within hopefully the next 45 days. As far as they're coming in with the concept plan, they're looking at about 60 days from now. They have some ideas, but it's certainly preliminary, and what they'd like to do is come meet with staff and, you know, say, "Mayor, to myself," and then we'll go through it and see what their concept is and how viable it is. And then go forward after that. The Montecito, what I call the 10 acres, that's the most recently platted one, where there was 25 six-plex townhomes, 150 units that were slated for that. Vintage homes, they committed immediately to, all of those zones, it was owned by the bondholders. And they're going like gangbusters after they're wanting to do a six-plex every four months, and they're on about their seven, six-plex now. So they're definitely moving out there, and they're selling quickly. The Pelican Coast South, that's your 100 acres. Unfortunately, our recent attempt to get an LOI to them, they just don't have any interest in the near future of doing anything with that property. Purely Organic, at 195 Jackson is, they have their CO, and they are supposed to be open for business, I think tomorrow actually is supposed to be their first day. That's going to be really exciting. That's one of our first new mixed-use projects that we've done, and it really came out nice. And thank you for Kathy Hammond for doing that. The old post office building, 210 Jackson, that one's currently under contract. They are past their due diligence, and they're moving full steam ahead with their closing. That closing should happen within about 30 days. And the renovations that they're expected to do, and of course, this is the dentist office I'm talking about across the street that is, has a Senate contract, they're wanting to extend all their services. For a while, they'll continue to operate out of the other building that they're currently in, that's Stockrye's and Calderama, but it's going to be about 12 months renovation, both interior and exterior. And we're pushing them hard to reduce some of that impervious and get some landscaping in there. You know, it's a tough call, and one of the things that really helps us when the council through the reduction in parking sizes to nine-way eighteen, that's going to help, which ultimately is going to yield a little bit more impervious areas, is my hopes in landscaping with it. First thing I'll do once they close is make a phone call about cleaning up the building. Of course, they know my position on that already. The old post office parking lot, as you know, we purchased that, and, you know, we're looking to use it for some kind of city facilities over the next five to seven years. Hopefully, we can put something together. We're working with Public Works and Fire Department now to give us kind of a wish list, and we can conceptualize that in some kind of an illustration to see if we can get a vote on that property. So right now, that's just in the talking stage and seeing if it's feasible to really combine them there. It certainly is the right area. That A1A quarter is the highest area since Satellite Beach, and so for response time, especially after hurricanes, where we often have to leave, this just means, I just wonder we can stay here to provide services. The Oceana North is about 90% sold out, that's 54 units. Anticipated completion is summer of 2019. Oceana South, as well as the clubhouse, also 54 units, is sold out, and that one should be completed somewhere around October 2018. And Pelican Beach Solar Canopy, that one there, currently, it's in review for the expansion of the Electrical Assist vendors and for their events during, you know, their power units during different events. And FDP is looking to have a permitting in place within 30 days, and project completion is somewhere around May of this year, 2018. The Desotapan, permits in the hand, however, the modifications are in the works. It's going to RFP by the end of the month. Projects start within 60 days with completion, within 46 months from the start. Peglegs, as we know, is the current developer, is now out of contract, and the CRA tonight actually had discussed accepting a backup contract, and it looks like they will be coming back to us within 90 days with a concept for the board to discuss with a developer's agreement. Villasiana Town Homes, there's two four-plexes that are in permitting, well, actually, they've been permitted, and one of them is currently under construction, so that's an additional eight units. The first four should be completed somewhere around July of this year, and the other four-plex around October of 2018. And the A1A resurfacing and mast arm placement signal should be switched over from the strand poles to the mast arms within three to four weeks, milling and asphalt in March and April, which should be after the sand re-nourishment project is completed, which is approximately June of 2018. So we've been very busy, and we've got a lot of good stuff going on.
Thank you very much, Sean. Which I know this will come back to us at other times for discussion.
Yes.
Thank you. Courtney, any further business on the city manager report? Thank you. Moving on to Agenda Item 7, open up a public hearing. Discuss, take action on ordinance number 1153, which is a second reading.
Ordinance number 1153, an ordinance of the City of Satellite Beach, Brevard County, Florida, repealing Section 14-3 sub-B sub-5 regarding disposal of dead backyard chickens, renumbering subsequent subsections, providing severability, providing effective dates. The second reading of ordinance number 1153, and there was a typo in the section number that's been corrected in this ordinance.
Thank you. Motion to approve 1153 on second reading?
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Breimer, second by Councilwoman Gibson. Discussion from council before open up for public. This time, open up for public comment on Agenda Item 7, ordinance number 1153. Here, none, back to council. Discussion from council. Your None Lenore?
Councilman Alford?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Montzaro?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gibson?
Yes.
Councilman Breimer?
Yes.
Yes, motion passes.
Thank you, staff. Moving on to Agenda Item 8, discuss, take action on agreement with Brevard Solar for City Hall Solar. Suzanne?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Just in brief, this is the discussion on the actual agreement.
Just in brief, this is the discussion on the actual agreement terms. With Brevard Solar, you recall at previous meetings, we had discussed the results of the RFP and at your October 18 meeting, you approved a ward of the RFP to Brevard Solar. And two representatives of the company are here with us tonight, so if there are any questions, they'd be happy to answer them. Essentially, after the RFP process, after staff review, a meeting with the contractor and discussing, you know, the options and the best plan for the city, we actually decided to slightly downsize the originally quoted system. So originally, you may recall, it was a 92.2 kilowatt system. We've reduced it just a little bit to an 82.5 kilowatt system and part of the reason for that is we expect to need less energy anyway because of the shading that the solar panels provide on the roof, which was not something that we originally thought about when we asked for specific sizes of systems. So that also dropped the price down a little bit for us. It is now quoted at $150,975 plus the cost for the bond, which is $4,500. And the projected annual electricity savings with a slightly smaller system is going to be $7,800. There are a lot of details in here included about the warranties, not only on the product components, but also warranties that the contract provides about workmanship. There's a leak-free guarantee, you know, for the roof itself and things like that. So we feel like we've got a good product here on the agreement. It's been reviewed by legal and we're happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you very much. Council questions? The one I hadn't, I asked you before and I believe I spoke with the gentleman. When we had this before, I had asked that if the power goes out from FPL, will our solar systems still operate? And is there new upgrades so that that can happen? Where we can isolate ourselves from FPL, yet still provide ourselves with power because we have put in solar? And I know in houses, I believe you can do that. In the reading I've done, you can. So I'm just wondering where our system is. Can that be an addition at a later date or is it something that we should look at?
Yeah, Jim or John, you want to come up and address that?
Thank you for having us here tonight, we appreciate it. We spent a lot of time on the...
Yes, please, for the record, state your name.
I'm sorry, Jim Spann, owner of Brevard Solar, and my vice president, John Williams, who should be helping me manage the project. To answer your questions specifically, we did not include battery backup in this. That right now, this is a purely grid tie solution. It is being designed that as the technology continues to improve in battery technology, it can very easily adapt into the power electronics. So the inverters we've used are specifically designed to the Tesla Powerwall or any other type of battery backup solution. The cost to make a grid interactive and a battery backup system is almost twice the cost of this grid tie system. And as we talked to all of your players, it was more about return on investment as much. And this beautiful generator you have that absolutely performed wonderful during that outing. So that's our immediate response.
I just wanted to make sure...
No, it's a good one. Everybody since the hurricane has asked about that.
Thank you very much. Any other questions for them? Thank you very much.
Thank you, you bet.
Counsel, any questions? At this time, open up for public comment on Agenda Number 8, our agreement with Vard Solar for City Hall Solar. Here are no public comment on that, bring it back to...
Motion to authorize city manager to sign the agreement with Vard Solar to install a solar system on City Hall.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Brymer, second by Councilman Osmer. Further discussion from council. Here are none, Lenore.
Councilman Gibson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Montanaro?
Yes.
Councilman Osmer?
Yes.
Councilman Brymer?
Yes.
Yes, motion passes. Suzanne, thank you. Staff, thank you. Moving on to Agenda Item Number 9, take action on purchase of self-contained breathing apparatus for fire department.
Thank you, Mayor. Staff is requesting that you retroactively authorize the waiver of the bid process to purchase self-contained breathing apparatus for the fire department in the amount of $9,280. This is a budgeted item, but to comply with the 15-year useful life, the department needed to purchase eight replacement bottles to comply with NFA and ISO standards and they just didn't realize that that exceeded the bid amount. And they realize that now. So we're requesting you to waive that process retroactively.
Questions?
I'll make a motion to retroactively author the waiver of bid process to purchase self-contained breathing apparatus for the fire department in the amount of $9,280.
I have a motion by Vice Mayor Montanaro, second by Councilman Brymer. If I hear no further discussion, I'll open up for public comment on Agenda Item 9. Here are none, back to council. One question, Courtney, on this. Are these have a shelf life and we've met them on the apparatuses that we have and this is just a replacement of it?
That's correct. And just to clarify to you, the company that we're purchasing or purchased this from is the contract provider for all of our units already. And so the likelihood that we would have gone to another contractor is pretty slim because, just because they are the servicer of everything that we've bought so far.
Okay, thank you. Here are no further, Lenore.
Councilman Gibson?
Yes.
Councilman Alford?
Yes.
Councilman Brymer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Montanaro?
Yes.
Mayor Cetina?
Yes, motion passes. Thank you. The next Agenda Item 10 is for our Agenda for the February 21st meeting. Just going to have a supportive report and a few other things added to this. So if you see something that we need to have on it, please see myself or Courtney on it. Thank you. Moving on to Agenda Item 11, city council appointment to boards.
We have some appointments here that are already on here.
We have a Board of Adjustment, alternate member willing to serve as a primary member. We have a climate ambassador that you'd like to add. We have Sampson Island Working Board. I don't... Well, you have a possibility of Nick that we've interviewed today. We have sustainability, the alternate members willing to serve as a primary member. So those are the ones that I have there.
On the sustainability board, if we've got an alternate member, generally, we kind of try to move them up. So I would make a motion to...
Can I interject just a second?
I was going to say...
One of the members, Ms. Balda, has not been able to be reached. They're having difficulty with her being able to attend the meeting, so you may want to consider holding off on that position until we can actually get in touch with her. If you look at the log...
I did, but is she the one that the position is going out?
No, she is an alternate member. We're considering her to be moved out.
Okay, but I guess the motion here is Christopher Reed to move up.
I'm looking at somebody who's going to be able to be at meetings.
Yes.
So I'm looking at Christopher Reed right now.
There are two alternates, I just...
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that we're putting Christopher Reed in as the primary member at this stage.
Okay, so is that a motion?
That's a motion.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Council, Vice Mayor, excuse me, Montanaro, second by Councilman Brymer, discussion on that.
I think it's a very good choice.
Okay, good. Okay. Lenore?
Councilman Gibson?
Yes.
Councilman Osmer?
Yes.
Councilman Brymer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Montanaro?
Yes.
Mayor Cetina?
Yes, motion passes. Okay. Sampson Island Working Board?
So let me go back here. The sustainability board says there are two primary members open, is that correct?
Yes. Well, now you have one primary member...
So now we have one primary because we just filled the one, right? So we still have one sustainability primary opening.
And one alternate.
And one alternate. Correct?
But at this time, we have... We don't know about Ms. Balda because we haven't been able to get a hold of her, but we have Nicholas tonight, whom we interviewed, that we could fill the spot.
Correct.
Nicholas here.
And I'll make a motion to appoint him to a permanent member seat tonight.
Second.
I have a motion by Vice Mayor Montanaro, second by Councilwoman Gibson. Further discussion? And Lenore?
Councilman Brymer?
Yes.
Councilman Alford?
Yes.
Councilman Gibson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Montanaro?
Yes.
Mayor Cetina?
Yes, motion passes.
I'll make a motion to approve resident David Almer serving on the sustainability board as a climate ambassador.
Second.
I have a motion by Vice Mayor Montanaro, second by Councilman Osmer.
Can I just clarify that the Climate Ambassador Committee is not a subcommittee of the sustainability boards, they're just an ad hoc committee. So I just wanted to make sure that people are aware of that.
Thank you. Further? No, Lenore?
Councilman Gibson?
Yes.
Councilman Brymer?
Yes.
Councilman Osmer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Montanaro?
Yes.
Mayor Cetina?
Yes, motion passes. Board of Adjustment, I guess there's...
So there's one permanent seat that's got to be filled.
Who has been the longest alternate?
Looks like they were both the same date.
And seat your check and how does the... Does one have a better attendance record over?
Yeah, I think Richard Kelly Height has been at more meetings.
They've both been the same?
They've both been the same, yeah. They've both been to six meetings. So that would leave, we appoint one of them to a permanent seat, that would still leave an alternate seat available.
Right, which they are at the present time.
Right.
I'll find a motion for one or the other.
Who's the liaison for adjustment? Council. Is there a council liaison to that?
Maybe me.
You have a good one.
Board of Adjustment. Come on, so many of them.
No. I think you're in the Board of Adjustments, yeah. Okay.
Any suggestions?
Suggestions, one or the other?
I'll make a motion to appoint Richard Kelly Height to the permanent seat.
I have a motion by Vice Mayor Montanaro.
Second.
Second by Councilman Osmer, further discussion? Here are none, Lenore?
Councilman Gibson?
Yes.
Councilman Brymer?
Yes.
Councilman Osmer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Montanaro?
Yes.
Mayor Cetina?
Yes, it passes. Think they got them all?
They got them all, I believe.
So we need to get a few other alternates and stuff, unfortunately. They're doing pretty good though. Okay, moving on to Agenda Item 12, approval of minutes.
I'll make a motion to adopt the November 15, 17 regular meeting, the December 6, 2017 regular meeting, and the January 3, 2018 regular meeting.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Brymer, second by Councilman Osmer. Further discussion? Lenore?
Councilman Gibson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Montanaro?
Yes.
Councilman Osmer?
Yes.
Councilman Brymer?